Good morning, this is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. As we do all meetings, we will start with a brief moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the US flag and the Texas flag. I'd like to ask Mayor Brewer and Commissioner Hernandez to lead us in those two pledges right after our moment of silence. Please rise. Mayor, Commissioner?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Public comment, I have one public comment, Mr. Ruben Pena?
Huh? Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I've come here this morning to visit with you about our Elections Department. As you well know, and has been publicized in the paper this past election cycle, there were a number of individuals whose votes were thrown out, basically disqualified for any number of reasons. My secretary's brother, who is visually impaired, had his vote disqualified and just received notice several days after the election was over. As you may or may not be aware, the Election Code provides for the Elections Office to notify voters when their vote has been disqualified. And the effort by our Elections Office seems to be falling short. Well, it doesn't seem, it is falling short. The fact of the matter is, what happens when people's vote has been disqualified is that they're basically disenfranchised. We would ask the Commissioners Court to visit with Mr. Ortiz and make sure that they take efforts because they counted these votes or disqualified the day before the election, that they send someone or make a phone call to these voters. Because in the end, at the end of the day, not only do you, but the Elections Office are employees of the citizens of this county, and we should make sure, take every effort possible to make sure that every vote is counted. And in that regard, the Election Code provides for a remedy for that issue. And so that is my comment to the Commissioners Court this morning. I've also read in the newspaper recently that you all had adopted a code of conduct. I've looked on your website, I can't find it, and I'd like for it to be posted so people can know what the code of conduct for the Commissioners have adopted for Cameron County. Thank you very much.
It's on the first page of the website.
On the first page?
On the first page.
I'm obviously not very good at computers.
It's toward the bottom of the list.
Is it? Okay. Well, neither you nor I are very good at that, but thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ruben. Mayor Brewer?
Judge Commissioners, thank you so much for letting us speak a few minutes today. In kind of seconding Mr. Pena's problem with the election, we really had a major screw-up in LaFaria because they changed the polling place the morning of the election, and people didn't know where to go. And there was no signage, it was extremely unorganized, and they split the Democratic and Republican Parties up in their primaries, and it was really a mess. I'd like to second the motion about the comments on the code of conduct. I was unaware we had one. We absolutely want to hold our elected officials and our county people to the highest standards, and I applaud Commissioner Garza for putting that on the agenda, and I support that 100%. Gaming halls, gosh guys, I know we've talked about it in the past, we've got 53, and I'm going to call them illegal casinos, but they're casinos that, in the LaFaria ETJ area, not in the city limits, but they're in our ETJ area, that are operating, and I commend the county for going in and your fire marshal and trying to shut some of them down that are operating without the right rest rooms, etc. But they opened up the next day. They don't even slow down, and it's a real problem, and it's real blight on my community, and we certainly need the county Commissioners' help to either look at our laws or actually enforce our laws, because it's a real problem. I'd like to introduce John Hernandez, he's a longstanding Commissioner at the City of LaFaria, he's in his 15th year on the Commission, and he's a good guy, and he's a veteran, and we'd like to invite all you guys to our 4th of July Veteran Celebration, June 30th, at the City of LaFaria. We do a large raffle for veterans, and we have fireworks and big barbecue cook-offs, so if you guys can make it down to LaFaria, this is an open invitation. Thank you so much for your time, Judge, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. RS Lozano?
Your Honor, I came today to talk on what is foremost clear, is an indictment exist. And that's the one signatory caveat of Western contributions to our civilization, and that is the notion that one is innocent until proven guilty. Intervening at this stage is dastardly to a fair court system. It pales throwing out the baby with the bathwater maxim that we're used to hearing, because you're striking at the foundation of constitutional criminal law. You seek not only to throw out the baby, the bathwater, you're throwing out the whole The ringleader of this agenda item realizes how revolutionary the innocent concept is to our society. It permits me and those like me to stand freely and attempt to be persuasive with you concerning this matter, without y'all curtailing my liberty. Because a few blocks from here, as y'all know, common law does not exist. They're trying to implement it, but they haven't. So like 95% and more of this world, they have civil law. And that does allow y'all in power to stop someone's freedom and throw away the key. That is not our way. Now, I'm not trying to, I may have to invoke being a good old boy myself for a favor in a little while, but right now, I ask you to be prudent by not throwing away this great precept of innocence because, sure, one of y'all had a brief spurt of opportunistic grandstanding, but he has shown restraint since then, based on reason. And he'll exhibit that shortly. And I had hope, I had to change that word from "have" to "hope," I had hoped that one of you would vigorously espouse the virtue of innocence, given how many times you've had to invoke this in the past. Were you here, he should prod you to table this matter to a ripe moment, unfettered by momentous sentiments like tainting the fabric of a jury pool. That's exactly what you're about to do if you embark on any discussion other than tabling this matter. Y'all don't want a technicality to allow an out for someone? I know, because I've had many discussions with several of you, and that's not your nature to allow a technicality to be the basis for an out. So you should consider, any discussion is going to tamper a live case. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Lozano. Any other public comment?
Judge, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
No relation to anything that was just discussed, just a personal comment. I have the pleasure of telling the rest of the Commission and some of the employees with Cameron County that have been around as long as I have, and some that have been around a lot longer than I have, but in the process of aging here for the last 12 years, I've had the opportunity, you know, to always include my family in pretty much anything I do. And I just wish to announce to this group that recently, my son, my youngest son, which usually accompanied me here when he was in junior high and high school, graduated with his doctorate degree in pharmacy, and as of tomorrow morning, he'll be a registered pharmacist in the state of Texas. I'm really proud of the accomplishments, all three of my kids, and, you know, the virtues and things that they've learned through my actions in community, what I've done, and the best part of all of that is that all three reside, and hopefully, it appears, will continue to reside in Cameron County, as citizens of this county, trying to make a difference, as some of your children also do. And I'm just proud of that fact, I look forward, you know, to hopefully, at some point in their lives, involvement in the process of bettering our communities. But it appears that even a fiance of the one that just graduated in the same field will be joining us in about a year. So I just wish to announce to this court, if you see my son smiling from one end of his face to the other, and my family, that's the reason, we're really proud of him. And I look forward to his future in our area, just like I do my other two kids, and son-in-law, and granddaughter especially. But, you know, if you see Thomas somewhere, and he looks happy, it could be because he proposed and they accepted, you know, or it could be because he graduated, or it'd probably be both, a little of each.
Well, congratulations, Commissioner, you got a raise all of a sudden, right?
I got a big raise.
Because he's off the Garza payroll.
I've been paying tuitions to universities for many, many years, and I look forward to, what's the cost?
Congratulations. And he proposed to "they," more than one?
No, to "her."
Okay, you said "they."
No.
Okay, all right.
They, I meant they too.
All right. Okay, consent items. Any item I want to take, the only one I want to take out, I talked to Commissioner Sanchez, he was not aware of this particular travel item. I asked him to text me this morning, or between yesterday and today, it's double Y.
BB.
He didn't know anything about it, so I asked that that item be tabled. Double B?
For discussion.
Double Y?
B or D?
Double Y, is that?
Yes. Double Y to be tabled.
Pull out double O and double P.
Okay.
And triple T, the dates, instead of 27 and 28, should be 28, 29.
Okay.
On item 2, triple G, just want to have a clarification on that.
Triple G?
Yes.
Okay, pull that one out. On triple K, is that the same one where, did we talk about it last time, where all of them were going and shutting down the office? I want to pull that one out again.
You want to table it, or you want to pull it out?
I've tabled it, I mean, I think we had discussed about not closing the offices down, so, table. Anything else? All right, do I hear motion to approve consent items, with the exception of those items that we've tabled or pulled out to discuss separately?
Judge, just one more. Is double M the same as double K, is that office going to close too?
Double M?
You mean triple M, right?
I meant triple N, I'm sorry. Triple M, thank you.
Yeah, that's a question I had to.
Okay, let's.
Pull that out.
Let's pull it out. Or let's, you know what, is anybody here from the Constable's office, from Los Fresnos?
Or the JP. There's not the Constable requesting the JP.
I'm sorry, JP.
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 JP, I'm sorry, JP, yeah. I think that many times we've asked the elected officials to be here when they have an agenda item on. It hasn't been the first time, it's done frequently, just in case there's a question. I think it's important to know that just because it's on the consent part, does not necessarily mean that it's going to just fly through without any questions. So on triple M, the same thing to table?
Okay.
I had a question, on triple R, why are we approving travel, it's already occurred?
I don't know, that's a good question. This is the one on triple R?
Pull it out.
Let's pull it out. Anything else? All right, do I hear motion to approve consent, with the exception of double B, which will be discussed separately, double O, double P, double Y to be tabled, triple G to be pulled out to discuss separately, triple K, triple M to table, triple R to discuss separately, and with the changes on the date on triple T, do I hear motion?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Double B, consideration and possible authorization for Laguna Madre Water District to have a water slide and bouncer at its annual employee summer picnic, which is being held at the Dolphin Cove Activity Center.
Mr. Sotelo's here, and I didn't want him to have come over here and not visited with us, you know, a little bit.
I'm sure he prefers not to, but. Gavino, you want to come up for a little bit?
I move to approve.
Judge Commissioners, thank you very much for allowing me to speak before you today. Up with the record, I'm Gavino Sotelo, General Manager, Laguna Madre Water District. On the 30th of this month, we're having our annual employee picnic, and we've been talking to your staff, and we're going to be holding the Dolphin Cove at County Park. One of the things, or two of the things that we want to have there is a water slide and a bouncer for the kids. This is probably the most looked forward to event of our employees, where almost 100% of our employees participate in their families, and as you can imagine, we have a bunch of kids, and without this two, the bouncer and the water slide, there won't be very much for the kids to do. We've done this before, we've had it at the Boys Club, we've had it elsewhere, we've not had any problems, and I understand the county attorney's concern about liability. We do have insurance, and we were holding each other, identifying each other, so I don't see an issue, so I respectfully ask that you allow us to hold those, that event to have those two things for the kids to enjoy.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Garza, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, carries.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
And if you have time, you can stop by, there'll be plenty of food to eat. I'm one of the cooks, by the way, so I know everything's going to be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavino.
Thank you.
Double O, consideration, approval of an architectural services agreement with Ford Powell Carson Architects and Planners for the design and coordination of the Cameron County Courthouse Architectural Assessment.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, I wanted to bring it to the attention of the Court that on page 13 of the agreement, section 9.2.4, on the reimbursable expenses, on the travel expenses, they say that they are subject to pre-approval by the County Auditor's Office, and at a rate to be determined by the auditor. I wanted to let the Court know that we should probably, that I think that we should use 175 as a per diem to include their lodging costs and their meal expense, and that if that's in agreement with the Court, that that is what I will use as a guide.
Martha, my only question, as we discussed briefly last week, was that why wouldn't they be held to the same expenditures that our county employees incur when they travel? That was my only question. And I know those numbers are probably outdated, we probably need to review them again, but that was just a question that I had.
Because we know that the travel policy, or rather the per diem that the county has approved for the county employees and the members of the Court is very unreasonable, it hasn't been updated for the past 12, 14 years, probably.
We need to look at that, and...
That Ray is chief of command and consistent with...
I'm sorry? Okay, well, we may want to consider looking at that for county travel as well, because it is outdated and...
We've started reviewing the travel policy, and we will be coming back to the Court with a modified policy for the Court to consider, and that way we can incorporate the increased cost in our budget for fiscal year 13.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear motion to approve?
So that would include, that would include that caveat, right?
Yes.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Garza, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Double P, consideration and approval of an agreement with Magic Valley Electric Co-op?
On double P, I had contacted Frank Baharano, because the agreement that's in their list, that the agreement is with County Parks, and I don't know if that has been changed, it should be Cameron County. And also, the venue is in Hidalgo County, and I'm going to see if we could get a change to Cameron, they may not allow it, but I would like, you know, approval subject to...
Do I hear motion to approve, subject to legal review?
So moved.
By Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Garza, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Triple G, Health Department Office Staff, Health Administrator Ivette Salinas, and others traveled to Austin, Texas on 6/25 to 6/27 to attend the hospital preparedness program?
Judge, I think that item had a general fund of dollars being used, and they're...
And that should be a grant-funded item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I hear motion to approve with that change? By Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Benavides, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Triple R, Veterans Service Officer Salvador Castillo, Commissioner Precinct Ford, Dan Sanchez, traveled to Bear County Official, discuss their Veterans Court System in place?
Judge, I pull this only because this has already occurred, do we have a policy for approving items after the facts?
Well, we've done it pretty routinely, if someone travels in the middle or before our next scheduled meeting, and it's travel that they have to do, we'll normally retroactively do it, but...
Correct, and that's the only way that the individuals can be reimbursed, because if y'all don't approve it, then it's not approved travel.
So it's based on the same travel policy, everything the same?
Yes.
Except after the fact?
Right.
Okay, motion to approve?
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, do I have a second? By Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any approve?
Judge.
I mean, I'm sorry, item carries.
I believe that...
Item triple K, Judge Sally Gonzalez is here, if we can address that item.
I don't know if we can go back and look at it?
Yeah, if somebody wants to bring it back up.
I'll make a motion to bring it back.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Garza, to untable the tabled item, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Judge, I think the question was, the issue has been...
Whatever you want, it's good. If you can answer it from there, it's fine. Yeah, it's just, it's just the concern of closing the office.
The office will not be closed.
Okay.
The reason I'm taking my court administrator and my other traffic coordinator is because she's getting cross-trained to do all the, not all the evictions, but they have a big, a good eviction course at that school as well, and the offices will not be closed.
And I think that was the only concern.
No, and we're not asking for room, and board, and meals, and the only thing we're asking is for the registration for my staff and myself to attend.
Okay, so we...
And we're on the host committee as well.
So it will not be closed?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, that was a concern. Do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Benavides, I'd like to make sure Garza, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
Thank you very much.
Anybody here from the JP Los Fresnos?
Budget amendments, line item transfers under salary schedules.
Judge Commissioners, the transfers start on page 1, and they are mostly operational, JP 4, JP 5-2, the tax collector office is moving $1,985 into advertising. Then you have the next page, the infirmary, MNO for the courthouse, MNO for the courthouse is moving $10,582 from equipment maintenance to extra help. Then you have the Sheriff's Department, the juvenile outreach program, which is self-funded. On page 2, the bottom budget line item transfer is for the Parks Department, and they are moving budget from into Isla Blanca Park for fuel, building maintenance, Andy Bowie Park, the Greens Division, Community Parks, Brownie Road, code enforcement, Parks Admin, and they're reallocating funds between those line items. The next one, on page 3, is for the Constable Precinct 2 out of the Drug Porfirity Fund, Constable Precinct 7 out of the Porfirity Fund, then you have the tobacco grant for the Health Department. On page 4, for the MNO Hester Building, there's, we're reallocating $25,000 worth of funds to building maintenance at the Hester Building, from pooling funds from the Dancy Building and the Santa Rosa Technology Building. Apparently, they're going to be undergoing an audit, juvenile state audit, and there are a number of repairs that need to be done to the Hester Building so that they will pass inspection. We're pulling these funds from this division, and I spoke to Bruce yesterday, and spoke to the Juvenile Department as well, and we're going to be meeting with them, I believe, this afternoon, if not sometime tomorrow, to see, now, it's my understanding the total repairs are going to cost between 25, excuse me, to 30,000, excuse me. The Juvenile Department has $5,000 that they're going to offset some of this cost with. However, we're going to talk to them about reallocating more funds that they have out of programs that they have generated fees, so that we could possibly get them to add up some more money to minimize the cost to general fund. The next one, the next budget amendment is for the Jail Division, the Los Fresnos Anics, and the County Clerk, and then you have salary schedules for the Juvenile Department that are budget neutral as well, out of Fund 450, for your approval.
You recommend their approval, Martha?
I recommend their approval, yes, subject to negotiations with the Juvenile Department.
On that other?
On that other one, yes.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Hernandez.
And I have something else, you have this, this item that was placed in front of you right here with this long legal-sized sheet in here, that is for the pre-trial services. The pre-trial services, when their budget was initially adopted, they had committed to bringing in revenues of $222,500. They, it does not appear that they're going to be able to reach that goal. I anticipate they will generate $116,000, which will cause a shortage in that department. If the Court will recall, they had come to Commissioners Court, and I think originally we had budgeted that the general fund would transfer in 90-some-odd thousand, as they had in the years past, and they were requesting a transfer of $126,000 to balance their budget, which the Court agreed to. It appears now that, based on what their expenses are right now, what the revenue is right now, and just covering their salaries and the funds that they have encumbered to date, that they will need at a bare minimum about $83,000 additional to come in from general fund. I spoke to Kevin about this yesterday, and we had talked about it last week as well, and what, what I understand that they are proposing, and what he has proposed in the memo that he sent to the Court, is that the Court agree to transfer funds that they have in the indigent defense budget, which is in general fund, which is what is used to offset, I mean, to pay the cost of the attorneys for the indigents, and to transfer money from that budget to meet what they are going to need over here. I don't know what the Court's consensus is, I told him that any way you look at it, it still equates to more money coming from general fund into this program. So if the Court wants to have it on as a discussion item for the next Commissioners Court, you know, we'll be glad to put it on. Kevin is not able to be here today to address that.
We're not voting to transfer today, are we?
No, it's just an FYI to the Court, that is a situation that's on the horizon that is right now.
Why don't we bring that one back? I've got a concern regarding transferring 100, almost $100,000 back into that department. Why is it that the revenues have fallen so short?
He, yeah, he puts it here on his memo that they're not able to generate money due to lack of money that was in the economy, that the families are not able to come up with a 3% bond, and that they have... not able to, to come up with a three percent bond and, um, that they have written three hundred and sixty-eight bonds as of today, as opposed to five hundred and sixty-three in two thousand eleven and nine hundred and thirty-nine that they wrote in two thousand ten. Uh, I, I think that he would be better able to answer these questions. Um, I'm just presenting this to the court today, you're not...
Well, when we were adopting the budget this past year, there was some concern regarding not funding indigent defense enough.
Correct.
Okay, so if that, and aren't they the same group?
Uh, yeah, well, they're very...
I mean, isn't Judge Nelson kind of spearheading both?
Yes, Judge Nelson is...
Indigent Defense and this one, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, so if, if the last budget, we were being, we were being told that we were not funding indigent defense enough. And so now Kevin's recommend, whose recommendation is it to take from indigent defense?
Uh, it's, it's, I believe it's both of their recommendations or rather, that's what they're asking for.
Okay, so last fiscal year, they're saying we didn't fund indigent defense enough. So now they're asking that we take a hundred thousand dollars almost from indigent defense to keep funding this project. That true?
Correct.
Okay, can you set it back up and ask them those questions so they can be prepared? Because that's what I'll, I'll be asking at that point. Okay?
Okay.
All right, anything else?
That's it, Judge.
Do I hear motion to approve?
We already have.
No, all right. Okay, approval of claims?
Claims or warrants number two eight...
You already voted on it, I think?
I'm sorry.
Okay, do I hear motion, I mean, blah, blah, blah. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Claims?
Warrants number two eight one three three seven through two eight one eight seven seven, warrants number two eight one eight seven nine through two eight two zero nine seven, warrants number two eight two one zero two through two eight two two four five, void warrants number two eight one four three six. Uh, it was a claim that was processed that had two different vendors in the same, in the same check. Warrant number two eight one six eight two is also to be voided. Again, there was two vendors mixed in there. Uh, payroll dated June twenty-second for one million seven hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty, and fifty-six cents. Uh, ACH Caremark claims for a hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cents, for your approval. Do you recommend?
Yes.
Moved by Commissioner?
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm...
Second.
Benavides, second by Commissioner Gatz, please note the abstentions on the affidavits I provided. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, carries. Uh, do I hear motion to table the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gatz, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item D, consideration authorization for staff to request RFPs for the Cameron County Airport Fixed Base Operator RFP number one dash one hundred.
Judge, can I request at the item B table?
You don't want to...
Well, we're, we're working on putting the, um, the details of the RFQ together. Uh, probably about seventy, seventy-five percent complete, but there's a couple of issues that I've talked to Joe and Mike.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Gatz at a table.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item E, consideration authorization to advertise for RFPs for Los Fresnos Annex Cameron County Construction Services. That one ready to go?
Yes, sir. Good morning. We intend to, uh, put out the RFP for advertisement this Sunday and then four Sundays following. And in addition to just a straight competitive bid in our RFP, we're asking for the applicants to turn in a scoring criteria sheet, which will use different criteria to score them and ultimately, uh, select a contractor for the, for the project.
Okay.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Gatz, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, all in favor?
Judge, just one comment, you know, I, I, I just want to, um, to make sure that the board under, or the commission understands that it, we're doing an RFP instead of a bid, which allows us to do a best value for the county instead of a low bid. And it's a little bit different, totally allowed by statute, reviewed by legal, and it's not anything that has not been done in the past in other entities within our county.
Is it an RFP or an RFQ?
RFP.
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 With no numbers?
With numbers.
Or yes?
It includes a number.
Okay, yeah, all right.
But it's, it's a, a good process, I think that, that, we've not used it in the county before. Mr. Forbes was part of the developmental of the document and I, I look forward to learning a little bit more as we move along with the process.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item carries. Item F, consideration and approval of increase in salary to slot number thirty and number thirty-one, Department one hundred dash forty-three fifty. Is this the, um, is this the court reporters?
No, this is the court interpreters.
I mean, court interpreters?
The court interpreters.
Okay, I, this is, I prefer that we wait until the budget and we factor that in instead of trying to give somebody increases in slots in the middle of the budget year.
I think it'll open a floodgate if you start it now.
So do I hear motion to table?
So moved.
Second. By Commissioner Gatz, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, carries. Item G, consideration approval of an amended implementation plan as part of the CUC Tech Share Agreement between Cameron County and Tyler Technologies. Hey, Joe?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. This is an amended plan. When Chris and I sat down a couple of months back, we identified that we hadn't removed some developmental projects. So this changed the budget, we brought it back to the court to show that we've actually saved a little bit more money, we're saving approximately close to about twenty thousand dollars.
You recommend it, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear motion?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Hernandez, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item H, consideration action to approve the early voting polling locations for the Democratic and Republican primary runoff elections of July thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. Roger, this maybe gives us an opportunity to talk about what Mr. Penya brought up during public comment in terms of disqualified voters and then what the mayor brought up about shifting polling locations at the last minute?
Sure.
Is that, is that what happened?
Uh, shifting polling locations at the last minute in La Feria was because of Green Element, I think it's an elementary school. We had designated that, we had gotten approval to use that, that school. Last minute, it was about a week before or somewhere around there that we received notice through the Democratic Party that that wasn't going to be available. And so they, uh, they, uh, they suggested we use the Sam Houston School, which is across the street on that, on Canal. So what we did is we, we, we posted, we made a poster, posted notice on it, posted it on the website, uh, regarding that change. We weren't happy with that change either because it was too close to the...
But that originated from the Democrat Party that asked you to change? Or you didn't, did you, I mean, I guess I'm trying to, because you said the Democratic Party asked you or told you that that location would not be available?
They were notified and, uh, in turn, the Democratic Party.
By whom?
Jared, Jared called me by the, I believe it was the superintendent.
Okay.
Um, if it wasn't a superintendent, yeah, I believe it was a superintendent.
Okay, somebody from the school district.
Principal of that school, maybe.
Okay.
And so in turn, they called me and notified me of it.
Is that like, is that within the legalities of doing a change in a location? I mean, can we do that legally? I mean, I can imagine an emergency situation or something, but just like change after we've advertised?
Well, the reason, the reason that they, they decided not to allow us to be there was because of the school, uh, children still in school and I think, uh, they may be having, I don't know what they had, whether it was, uh, maybe testing or end of the year, something or other that they notified us.
Yeah, but my question is, what's the legality of making a change at a polling place?
The requirement, the requirement there is for us to post, uh, notice, if we have a website, put it on our website. Uh, through the Democratic Party, I believe the Democratic Party, uh, notified people. But we did put it on the website, we did make a poster on it and, uh...
So it was, but I guess the point is that it wasn't something that you, you as the elections administrator unilaterally did, someone told you?
Absolutely not. We didn't do it purposely, we didn't do it because of wanting to change the location and for any other reason than because of the school district's unavailable site.
Okay, well, Mayor, that, that answers your...
Well, yeah, but in reality, what happened was people went to the regular polling place and the fire station, they were told, go to the school, go to the school, there's no signage, nobody there, you drive food. And, and they find out from the great fire, whatever, that they moved to another school. At least, it, it really hurt the turnout on Democratic side, it probably really helped the rolling inside as they brought the regular polling place and fire station. But extremely unorganized, no one had a clue that it wasn't in Green's Eye, they found that, that reason, which is across the region around inside of Denver, that no one, yeah, no one knew who was on first place or first place.
And I, and I guess the, if you were asked by, no, it was a superintendent or someone from the school that said, "We can't have it there," what do you do? I mean, I guess maybe additional signage and additional notification?
I, I, I voted election day myself in the morning, went to the fire station for a few years, and they, they said, "No, it's not that's Republican." So across that, where they submitted a three-year down, and you drive food, that party lot spent a fifty, you find out elections out there, then you had to move to another location, and it was, there was just no organization, no coordination, it was really frustrating.
I can understand, so...
It was a new year, I mean, they had, I know that some of the candidates had pledged their political things in front of the others, so, um, and I am a Republican.
How can we avoid that happening now?
Well, we're going to do it at the fire station.
Both of them?
Right.
Well, this, this, yeah, uh, for the, uh, for the runoff, the, they kept the Sam Houston School. So it's not at Green Elementary, it's going to continue at Sam Houston to avoid any...
But we have the early voting locations today on the agenda.
That's correct, sir.
Not, not the per, not the...
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, the parties, the parties, uh, the parties designate the locations.
Yeah.
We designate the early voting locations.
Okay. Mr. Penya?
What, what, never since the election office for today, if you find that voters are disqualified or, so they can, it's supposed to, they would never happen.
The question was, for those that didn't hear, was what is it that you're going to do to ensure that, that disqualified or potentially disqualified voters are going to be qualified, I guess, or notified promptly or within a reasonable period of time, right?
Right, so they can go vote.
So they can go vote.
The, uh, I believe what he may be talking about is either provisional voters or the, uh, people who vote by ballot, by mail. Uh, those letters go out from the board, actually.
What board?
Ballot board, ballot board, who presides over the ballot by mail or the provisional votes, they put out the letters and they, they do those letters as they, when they meet. And so they prepare all those letters and they go out at, on that day. Unless it's a, it's a meeting that takes place in the evening or late in the afternoon, then it goes out the next morning. But those letters are put out by the board, not by our office. I mean, yes, we, we, we send them out to the mail, through the mail and so forth, but that's put out by the ballot board at the time of their meeting, the same day.
And who puts together the ballot board?
The ballot board consists of people that are approved or designated by the parties or suggested by the parties. And so we normally have a group there that has an equal representation by the parties. And so they're the ones who go over those ballots, ballot by mail envelopes and the provisional votes. I mean, we don't, we don't disqualify them ourselves, it's a board that does that and they have a final, um...
So the ballot board is the one that disqualifies the voters that Mr. Penya's talking about?
That's what I'm assuming he's talking about.
They, they do disqualify, but there's a provision of the election code that says that you notify and, and whether it's by mail, by phone, or in person, we have a small number, I think, I think the record shows that there are only ten voters in this law by, by, by state, by, and that, these are, these are provided. And that seems to mean that, you know, there, there's a permanent duty to the party election office to notify those people, you know, just to let them know that you did this law by, you know, or you have, and you cured that problem on the call today in the election.
Well, we follow the election code and, and the law, yeah, that's, that's...
And, and the, on the other, on the other side of the, of the, of the, it is a, as you're, as Joe, it is a...
I, I, that's where I downloaded it from.
Oh, I think I wanted to say...
Joe?
Let me see it, all right.
I couldn't find it this morning here, I was looking for it.
The Code of Conduct is on the webpage, if there's any question about it.
Yes, sir. It's under the Human Resources page on the bottom right-hand column, there's the shortcuts, this Code of Conduct.
I don't, I don't, we were, so, we, we were, yes, we should lose me so that citizens don't have to be looking like, which obviously that technically, uh, you know, is very good at this, even Mayor Orhan, and so it'd be good to have a home way.
Go ahead.
Roger, uh, the ten, the ten ballots that Mr. Penya's talking about that were basically disqualified for whatever reason, were any of those people notified, uh, that day that you're aware of?
No, sir.
You sure?
Yeah, like I said, uh, the procedure is to send out the, uh, send out the letters and they, 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 I meaning the board, the ballot board themselves, sent out those letters.
So none of them were, were called?
Not that I know of, sir.
Well, if, if we were able to talk about all those things, maybe I can bring up some of the other issues, you know? I always, I mean, I, I know that I was called to Port Isabel in Laguna Vista that morning because, you know, in Port Isabel, there was a poll that was not open because no one there was adequately trained to plug in the machines or to unpack the boxes. And it was nine o'clock and no one, up until that time, could cast a ballot. And those, well, I shouldn't say that, two people did cast ballots and they were inside a cardboard box, right on top of the counter there at the time that I went in to look to see what was going on. And I know that I called your office.
Yes, sir.
I know that a lot of other peoples called. I, I think there was considerable confusion, just as you had, Mayor Brewer, in your town in the Laguna Madre area. There are folks going to vote at Laguna, uh, Laguna Vista, the polling place was not there, the people that were at that polling place were not telling them where to go vote, just that they couldn't vote, you know? I mean, it was quite a bit of frustration because some of those folks actually went to the other polling place at the high school and they couldn't vote because nothing was ready for them to vote at nine o'clock in the morning. And, you know, there were a lot of upset folks, rightfully so, uh, you know? I think that we, we need to better train folks to know what's going on at that level.
Uh, Commissioner, um, we do the training and I believe they do, we do the training well. The, uh, problem is not in the training, I believe. Uh, the training takes place the day, two days before then, before the election day, and we cover all those areas. And we cover it with everybody that has been notified to attend the training.
Well, then what was the problem?
The, the, the problem may be where people that are serving those areas were late appointees to those areas because of people canceling out at the last minute and we're notified by the parties when that happens and they try to replace those people right away. Uh, that morning, I called the Democratic Party and I called whoever I could to try and get that corrected and Jared acted on it pretty quick. He suggested to me that he had, had information that the Democratic Party table had been set. As he put it, I believe, it was, uh, it was not next to the other party's table. And so when they approached that table, they said, "No, you only vote Republican ballot here." And so they were, they, they had left. According to the information he gave me, there was three people that that happened to, but that they had been able to vote afterwards. The other area was a, a group...
And the other issue was the door being locked to the entrance of the polling place at that particular location.
Oh, I did.
Since it was a school, doors in the front were locked, you know, at, at eight forty-five. So it was not possible to go in. And, uh, you know, the other issue in San Benito, at the other school in San Benito, where no one showed up till after nine that morning also.
We may wanna, we, we-
So, I think that, you know, there's issues for concern.
Yeah, we may wanna hold this for another, uh, for another, for another day to talk about this because I was advised by counsel that we're out of our swimming lane.
I also, my sister voted for the volume elementary, at seven to four, eight, over six, seven, thirty. So she called the election office, and I'll pursue you about it. That, you know, she called me, and I say, "Call the election office," and then she went back, and she called half the time.
Okay, let's get back on the item.
Move to approve the, uh, voting location.
Anybody have any issue with the, with the relocation? Move by Commissioner Gatsa to approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All in favor, seeing by by saying aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, Adam Carries, item I.
Thank you.
You're gonna bring it back to the agenda, Judge?
I would put it back on the agenda at the next meeting, okay, that way we can talk about it.
Judge, if you wanna do I and J together, you can.
Okay, consider, uh, I, item I and J, consideration approval of a contract with Ceres Environmental for debris management removal and disposal post hurricane disaster recovery, and then consideration approval of a contract with Ceres Environmental for collection, characterization, packaging, transportation, disposal of hazardous material. Anybody have any problems with that?
Uh, legal?
No, on the debris removal, we actually put in a retainage of five percent until FEMA, all the process with FEMA is-
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve both item I and J, move by Commissioner Gatsa?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All those in favor, seeing by by saying aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, Adam Carries. Item K, consideration approval to allow Air Evac lifetime, life team to market the enrollment through payroll deduction of their emergency medical and air transport services membership to county employees through payroll deductions. How, how, and when are they gonna do this?
Uh, a few months, a few weeks ago, there was a, a company here to do a presentation on a, a proposal they had for county employees. It's called the Air Evac Team and Mr. Villarreal has been, discussions with legal, uh, trying to see how, uh, we can get this done through a payroll deduction and that's before you.
Yeah, but how they gonna, I guess my, my question is, how are they going to be soliciting the employees? Are they going to each warehouse or they're going, what are they gonna, how are they gonna do that?
What we, what we can do is, is, is set them up in a, in a certain location, like i- in the judicial building, in the table in front there, and the employees come in and out, go to the coffee or whatever.
And how long are we gonna do that for?
Uh, maybe before.
And, and the second question is, how are we gonna get that message to the employees with, with a, with a mass email to them?
We'll send email, we, we'll announce it and tell them, and even put a description of what it's all about.
Okay.
And what it covers.
I-
And then, we'll set up a, a table over in, in the, at San Benito Annex and we'll move one of, and so, when the employees have breaks or whatever, they can go by and do that. We're not gonna stop and have a meeting for all this because we don't really have.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Okay.
In checking with one insurance representative, if our, if our folks are insured through our county insurance, this is an eligible expense for them. So why would we wanna duplicate what they're already paying for a service that they're entitled to through their regular insurance?
Okay, we, our, our service covers eighty percent of the cost. Twenty percent is out of their pocket, okay? And, and, uh, in, in some of these cases where they've, they've flown kids to Driscoll and Corpus Christi or they've gone to the fireplace over in San Antonio, it runs into twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. Twenty percent is quite a bit of money. And so, this is to defer that-
It's like a supplement.
Yeah.
But they take care of a hundred percent.
I don't see it, you know.
Of that twenty percent, right?
Mm-hmm, they'll cover the whole amount.
Is that, is that part of the conditions? Cause I, I didn't see that in here. Is, is it in there, Dilvia?
They're here, right here, they don't answer your question.
No, 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 legal, I, I don't need-
I'm sorry.
You know, is, is the coverage of the twenty percent part of this document?
Well, what it says is that they will bill the insurance and that is it, they won't, and if you're a member, they, that's it. They won't come after the member for anything else, they will just bill the insurance.
Subject to the conditions that follow, one, two, three, four, five, six, right?
Well, think about who's gonna charge, it's gonna be you guys are gonna be charging the insurance company. And what you, what I remember y'all talking about was that, that's it. If, if you're a member, you take care of it a hundred percent. You know, the employee is not gonna get a bill from you all for whatever the insurance company, or whatever our insurance did not cover, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. With a membership, the person is entitled to receiving absolutely no out-of-pocket expense whatsoever. So, if us, uh, one of your employees signs up as a member, uh, there's, the other part of that with the insurance as well, eighty percent of what is considered reasonable and customary, and as we know in the world, reasonable and customary is often a lower figure than the actual charges turn out to be. So, in the event that there's a dispute over reasonable and customary amount, the deductible portion, the out-of-pocket, uh, twenty percent, or in the case that the insurance company determines that something was not medically necessary after the fact, it turns out that a doctor wanted to transfer a patient, but the, in, on medical review, it's determined that you really could've gone by ground and they, they've denied the claim, the member will still receive no bill whatsoever from us.
Or is that something that you eat?
That's absolutely, there, there will be no out-of-pocket expense for the employee regardless of how much the insurance does or does not pay or what the copayer deductible is. What it does is it completely immunizes the employee from having any out-of-pocket expense.
And I, and I guess the bottom line question, where is that in the agreement that we're about to adopt?
Well, it should be in the terms and conditions that there will be no out-of-pocket expense for a member and whatever we have in the insurance, whatever we are able to collect from insurance or third-party payers will be accepted as full and complete payment.
Got it.
Okay, one more question.
And in twenty-six years, we've never billed anybody that was a member for any out-of-pocket expenses for any, in any-
And a member includes families under that insurance?
Anybody that's covered in that membership, so a family membership, in our company, a family membership or a household membership covers everyone in the household. So if the employee signs up and, and does a payroll deduction for a household membership, anyone that lives under that roofline in that household, including non-relative family members or other people that are not insured are also included in that, in that coverage. As well as, if a, an employee has children, say in a divorce situation where the employee has children, but the children live with the, the other spouse, that membership will still cover those children, and if you have children away at school, those children are still covered under the family or the household membership. We're very inclusive, we're not looking for ways to get out of things, we're looking for ways to take care of people, so.
Okay.
Also, it's not required to have insurance or to be on the county's insurance or participate in membership.
So if they have a family member or somebody else in the household that has no insurance whatsoever or is not part of this plan, they're still covered and immunized from any expenses.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's pretty inexpensive for what you get.
Yeah, it really is, yeah.
If you need it, especially, you know, so.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? By Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Benavides, any discussion? All those in favor, seeing by by saying aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, Adam Carries, item L. Consideration possible approval to take legal action respecting the following properties and commissioners' court action to sell, lease, or otherwise convey, license, or permit the use or part of Cameron County's interest in the following properties in accordance with any applicable competitive bidding and notice requirements and procedures or exceptions thereto under law and under such conditions, dot, dot, dot.
Judge, we, uh, need to, uh, postpone consideration of this till we have an executive session.
After you read it. After I read all of it, Bruce, thank you. Alright, well, let's move on then, let's go to item M, consideration authorization to actually get into local agreement. Is this one okay to go, Bruce? Alright. Uh, between Cameron County Parks and Rec and the city of South Padre Island to implement and operate a lifeguard and beach patrol program, have you had? We're back again.
Yes, sir, um, we brought this back, Judge, um, we met with the auditor's office to look at the funding for it and, um, uh, we ran the, the agreement through Dilvia and through the city of South Padre Island. There is one, um, uh, issue that Dilvia has on the indemnification clause, um, where, um, the language reads that we, uh, hold each other harmless, uh, for negligent acts, uh, for each party.
So what does Dilvia want it to read?
I'm sorry?
What does Dilvia want that to read?
It should just be the, the city of South Padre Island indemnifying us, we're not, we're not doing anything, we're just paying them for a service. I don't know why it's a mutual indemnification.
So then, it's not written properly?
Well, we, we had, we had, uh, um, the city's attorney had sent us a draft and we sent it over, um, to legal. Um, and we agreed on a lot of the language, a lot of the changes, um, so.
It, I mean, the language does have, to the extent permitted by the constitution and the laws of the state of Texas, I'm, I'm just, I don't know why the county would agree to indemnify them when we're not the ones doing anything. They're the ones providing the service.
So they couldn't hold us responsible for anything anyway?
Right, I mean, we're paying for them.
So how do you want it to read?
I, I would rather it just be that the city indemnifies the county.
Is that what they want, or no?
Well, the city approved it last night at their city council meeting as is, the way it is right now. We'd have to amend it or take it back.
Okay, we're, we got, either we tabled it or we approve it subject to the change that Dilvia said and then you send it back to them for, for approval?
Judge, let me, let me just throw, throw this out for you. This is kind of a tempest in a teapot in the sense that the county cannot indemnify the city. I have not looked to see whether the city can indemnify the county. But if they can, and if this provision reads, uh, "To the extent permitted by the constitution and laws of the state of Texas, then we can approve it as is and leave it to a later day as to whether or not indemnification is permitted." It is an independent contract. We are not going to owe liability except in the most extraordinary of circumstances. And, and those circumstances would be where we somehow meddle into how they go about furnishing this lifeguard service. As long as we stay out of that, and I would advise Mr. Mendez, you know, if we do this, it gets turned over to the city of South Padre Island and they take it and we don't have anything else to say or do about it, okay? Uh, then there should be no, uh, liability exposure, you know, not, not accounting for unforeseen, you know, circumstances. But it would be an extraordinary situation where anyone would have any legal right to come against the county for having a simple independent contract with the city of South Padre Island.
The, the other thing, um, I wanna bring up is the funding, uh, Judge and Commissioners.
You know, can you, can, I think that for the sake of public, can you tell us what we're getting in this agreement?
Okay, what we're gonna do, um, for the public's, um, we, we, um, originally the, the city-
Now, tell us what we're getting with this contract.
Okay, what we're getting with this contract, we're getting ten lifeguards.
Ten lifeguards.
There's gonna be nine lifeguard stations, uh, permanent lifeguard stations, there's gonna be seven in Isablanca and two at Andy Bowie. Okay, with that, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, purchase a, uh, personal watercraft, which is a, a sort of like a jet ski and a, uh, little Jeep. Um, and, um, of course, other equipment, the, the boards, um, the, the, um, lifesaving rings and so on.
But they would, would they be purchasing that for the county or are we gonna do the actual purchasing?
No, they're, they're gonna purchase everything, it's gonna be a turnkey, we're just gonna pay them a certain amount and then they-
Maintenance, everything is theirs.
Everything is theirs.
Right, and the equipment is theirs.
That's correct.
Okay, and, and what else do we get, have you had?
Um-
Can you inform the public as to what times we can expect to have nine stations manned in those areas?
Yes.
And what days?
Okay. We will have, um, it's gonna run from, uh, June thirtieth, um, through September the fourth, I believe, and, um, it's gonna be from nine to seven P.M., seven days a week.
And that's this first year, starting this year.
Next year, yeah, next year would be, uh, for a total of a hundred and eighty-five days, which would be the same time from nine A.M. to seven P.M. And it would start, um, in March and run through September, uh.
And I think that those are the important facts for public to know, you know, what, if they can expect those services out there on the beach, you know, after we take this action. As of June thirtieth.
Yes, sir.
I'm satisfied.
Okay, move to approve.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Gatsa.
Judge, uh, one thing on the funding, um, what we were gonna, what we discussed last, uh, meeting was, uh, trying to separate the funding just for, for Isablanca and Andy Bowie. Uh, what we wanna do is we wanna run it across the board just for, for logistical purposes with, because of the auditor's office uh, having issues, you know, trying to reconcile the reports and so on. Uh, we wanna run it, uh, across the board, the one dollar increase.
But you'll be able to carve out what we're gonna spend that increase in, in fees towards lifeguards and capital improvements or anything else, you're gonna carve that out, right?
That's correct, that's correct. Now, it, you know, what we could do is, is we would have, we're gonna be short this year because, uh, we're starting in July, uh, starting to, to, uh, increase the fee by one dollar. We would've been able to, to, um, uh, I guess, pay for the entire project if we would've started in June. So, what we'd have to probably do is go back to our capital improvement money and, uh, reallocate some of that money to, to pay for, for the difference.
Are you gonna put notices at every little booth, letting them know that there's gonna be an increase effective June thirtieth or whatever day that is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we start immediately and put signs up, uh, we can also look at putting a notice in the paper.
Okay, alright. Okay, I had a motion, a second, all in favor, seeing by by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item N, consideration possible approval to give an annual pass for entry into the county parks David Emar. It is a payment in kind for supplying fifty-five gallon empty drums to be used by county parks. This just a one-time deal?
Yes, sir.
One year, how many, how many did he provide?
He's already provided us twenty barrels.
Okay.
Um, and he's gonna provide us-
So we're way ahead of this thing?
Oh, yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Sommo.
By Commissioner Benavides, and by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, seeing by by saying aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, Adam Carries. Item O, consideration and approval of a license agreement between Cameron County and South Padre Island Water Park and Resort for the use of the former Jeremiah's River Run concession site for temporary parking.
Uh, Judge, the, um, the, um, had asked us to, um, if they could use Jeremiah's site for temporary parking, uh, for, for vehicles, for their, the employees from the water park and the, uh, employees that are doing the renovation of the Holiday Inn, the hotel. Um, they need an area for sixty vehicles, um, it'll be for sixty days, um, and the fee was fifteen hundred dollars.
Are you running any of this stuff through the, uh, through the parks board?
No, we, we haven't had a meeting, uh, we had a meeting a few months ago, uh, but we haven't run any of this, these new items that have come up.
Is that per month or what?
It's, it's fifteen hundred dollars for both, for the sixty days, which is seven hundred and fifty per month.
Okay.
Let me mention, let me mention just one thing about this, Judge, just a comment, please, um. You know, there has been some discussion of a long-range plan for the water park to expand and Jeremiah's is, is theoretically or could be part of the plan. Uh, it should be clear for all those that are, you know, concerned about this, that this is a license agreement only. It is not a lease, it's not a sale, and this amount of consideration for it is for this very limited and non-exclusive right to use this area for parking and should not be considered in coming to any sort of, uh, value when it comes time, if it does at all, for, uh, the county to enter into any amended concession agreement for a long-term, uh, exclusive use of this parking area by the water park. That's the only comment, just to, for the record.
Do I hear a motion?
Sommo.
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, seeing by Commissioner Gatsa, any discussion? All those in favor, seeing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item P, consideration and authorization to solicit bids for the beachwear rental concession location number four in Isablanca Park.
Uh, yes, Judge, Commissioners, we have this, um, item to go out, uh, for bid. This is the, um, um, the beach, um, beachwear location, which is there at DJ Lerma. Um, their, their lease is gonna expire September thirtieth, uh, so we're going out for bid now, so we'll be ready for, for the September thirtieth date.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Sommo.
By Commissioner Benavides, do I have a second? By Commissioner Gatsa, any discussion? All those in favor, seeing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries, item Q, consideration approval of amendment number one for year two of the W.G. Yates Construction Contract. This action will continue to pre-position contract for current year twenty-twelve hurricane preparedness response and assessment. We're okay, legal? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
By Commissioner Gatsa, do I have a second? By Commissioner Hernandez, any discussion? All those in favor, seeing by by saying aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, Adam Carries. Item R, presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding state energy conservation office grant, wind turbine and light fixture retrofit project at Cameron, Benavides, and La Paloma Parks.
Judge, Commissioners, uh, we put, placed this on the, on the agenda. Um, there'd been some questions, um, concerns raised about the project, uh, and we wanted to do a quick slide presentation on, on the current project. This is, uh, a project that we received a grant from the state energy conservation office, um, and it's in the amount of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, uh, for three different locations. Uh, La Paloma Park, Cameron Park, and, um, Benavides Park. And I know that, that up until last week, we still had some issues, um, surrounding the project, and so we just wanted to update you all. Uh, as I mentioned, it's three wind turbines, a hundred and eighty-two light fixtures, three concrete foundations, and the total price tag on this project is a hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty. Um, this is a picture of the La Paloma Park project with the wind turbine, it's kinda dark, but, uh, in the back is a baseball field to the left-hand side and there's a concession stand. It is installed, in operation, and working. We did, uh, meet last week at the site, there was some training that was done by the contractor, um, and according to the contractor and to our staff, that, that, uh, that wind turbine is, is in operation, functional. This is a con, this is a Cameron Park turbine, uh, also currently working. Uh, we did have some issues there, um, I believe some sort of a, a ball or something on the top of the turbine had fallen. fallen, but it's, it's been fixed. They were out there, I think Pete was out there Monday, and they were out there the previous week, so there's been some work done. And I spoke to the contractor yesterday, and he says that this turbine is in operation, functional as well.
Are you saying, David, that at Cameron Park, a, a piece fell off too?
Oh, I'm sorry, Benavides Park is, is, I'm sorry, this is Cameron Park, my bad. Benavides Park is where we had the issue with the, the piece that, that fell off, and this, let me just, just go back to Cameron Park, Cameron Park, we still have an issue there with a, with a piece of equipment, hopefully, according to the contractor, we should have something from them either this week, depending on the weather, rain and lightning, or, or early next week, so that, so that system is not fully functional at this point, but it should be once they get, working on it. And then this is Benavides Park, it's functional and operational.
David, is it, is each turbine fit, surrounded by a, by a chain-link fence or something?
No.
Is it open?
Yes.
So if a piece, so if, if a piece falls off, and it's while the turbine is moving?
Mm-hmm.
Have they, has anyone tested the, how far this thing could go?
That has come up.
Does she wanna put some kind of a chain-link fence around it to avoid people from walking up to this thing and doing something to it?
We, that's probably the next step, we're probably gonna have to design something around these-
Put the chain-link fence, not to, don't waste a lot of money designing, just put it up.
Yeah, something that'll look nice, but yeah, we'll, we'll do something, we have had that discussion, Hondo and I-
I mean, for the safety of it, I mean, you don't want something like that-
You're gonna go climb on it, or what?
These things are spinning.
I'm worried about, you know how people are, are you gonna go, wanna look under it, or this, you know, a piece falls off?
Well, that was one of my concerns, Judge, when we went out there, you know, the ladder is attached to the pole, and-
Somebody could just find out.
Obviously, they had cut off some, left the nubs there, the bolts that were, that go into the concrete were already corroded. I mean, it hasn't been six months since this thing's been up, and-
I mean, it's a heck of a ceiling fan. Can we discuss?
No, it's a shredder.
Okay, it's 10 feet away, you know, it's a hard fact to protect, but the primary purpose of that would be to prevent access to the bottom of the pole for that, that nature.
But that's not gonna protect it from, from a projectile if it's, if it's moving, so you need something that's maybe 30 to 40, 50 feet around.
I don't know that you-
I don't know.
I don't know that you can protect from that.
My concern was that since it's in a park, you know how kids are, they can climb up on there and then we'd be liable.
A fence would at least be some effort.
Yeah, and I, I suggested that they cut off more of those step deals to get up there. I think we decided, Hondo, if I'm not, correct me? Yeah, to make it-
And, but, I think it's just a thanks for the sign.
You talking about the ladder?
Yeah.
Well, you gotta put something, 'cause if you have some young kid go up those, that ladder and falls, all of a sudden, we're, we got some, we've got some problem, you know, so you may wanna consider that as, as a priority right now.
Okay.
To safeguard that thing.
That's about it, any questions?
Yeah, as far, as far as the ladder's concerned, if you go by McDonald's, then one of the guys by McDonald's, you can see what they do, they have like a manufactured cover that basically goes over, over the fence and locks, and when they need to get up, they open it up, that kinda keeps, it deters people from trying to climb that thing. So there's ways to cover to protect the bottom of that ladder.
We'll look at different options to make sure we're doing something on that, on that end.
My concern was that, when I found out about it, and I, I came and I spoke to Pete, was it this, I don't know if you can see him here, one of the pieces fell off, and was, it was found across the street at the community center. Had this, you know, hit a child, I mean, these things are in parks-
Hit anybody.
Or a car that was passing, you know, who was gonna be liable for it? I talked to Mr. Peña, and he joined us at the site also, and-
Who's Mr. Peña?
Mr. Peña is a contractor.
Okay.
And he said it was working, we opened it up, it wasn't even connected, so, he said that, you know, our staff would be trained. Have they done that?
They did, walked through La Paloma and at Brownie on Friday, and there was a training-
All of us were out there at both parks on Friday, and there was maintenance, there was, there was several of us that, that went to both parks to see exactly what was happening, how to, how to disengage from lighting during high-wind events and that nature, and determine that both the, both La Paloma and Brownie both were in fact working and generating electricity.
Okay, is Javier still here? Javier, did you set up a meeting with Metro Electric and Half &amp; Associates regarding the transformer?
We, we did, we, except Half, Half couldn't make it down that day that we were, we were trying to meet. But they did send me a, a report that they got from the manufacturer of the transformer. That transformer, what happened is, when we originally designed that park, that transformer was supposed to be, or was designed for outdoors, and it was supposed to be put on a rack, but what happened is we put that, that transformer inside the mechanical room for safety purposes, you know, to keep vandals out. So what they were suggesting is that we give them the square footage of that building, they would come up with a design to get to, to extract that heat out of that room, to reduce the heat of that transformer, but they said that that transformer is the right size for the system.
Okay, and I guess the other question to you and Hondo is, according to Mr. Peña, if they shut down that transformer and cut off all electricity to the park, the meter would, would still continue to be working, so is that true?
He's, Half, the engineer, the electrical engineer from Half says yes, but it'd only be 3% of our kilowatt usage.
Okay, so does that mean that Mr. Peña is wrong?
Well, not that he's wrong, but he's saying that we would not break even, and that's, that's not true. 'Cause he says that, that the usage of that, the kilowatt usage of that transformer, whatever it's, it's producing, we would never break even on the, on the, the supply that, that the turbine is, is providing or producing. The, the, whatever we're using on that transformer is minimal, according to the engineer from Half Associates, which is, is minute to the whole, the whole energy savings.
So I guess I'm confused, when, when Mr. Peña tells me that if you shut down all electricity in the park, the meter continues to show that it's being used when in, in fact, it should stop totally.
Right.
So who's right, Mr. Peña, or?
The, the meter's still gonna turn, because that transformer is a step-down transformer for the, for the regular lights in the building, because of the, of the service that we have for the, the sports lighting, it's 480, so we have to step down the service to 110 for the general lighting around the area. But like I said, it's, what, what the engineer from Half Associates is saying is minimal, says it's 3%, or whatever our, our usage is, it's, it's about 3% of, of our consumption. So let's say if it's, if it's 1,000 kilowatts that we use, it's 3% of that 1,000 kilowatts.
I guess I don't understand, I'm sorry, I'm totally-
I mean, we could set up a meeting with him, and he can explain it to us, and, you know, because it, it was difficult for me to understand as well, I mean, it took him a while.
Are you telling me if we shut down the whole courthouse here, we cut off everything from outside, the meters are still gonna continue to be going?
Well, I don't think it, I think it's different, because the transformer for the building, it doesn't go through the meter, the way it is here, but over there, it, it does, that transformer, step-down transformer, is after the meter.
Okay, I mean, it doesn't seem right, but okay, that's fine, thank you.
Well, I'm thoroughly confused as well, so why don't you set something up, yeah, just why don't you set something up and clarify it for Commissioner Benavides, and then you can clarify it with me.
Yeah, please.
And let's do that, okay? So on this one, what, what do you want, Javier? On this one, or David?
Actually, it was just, I guess it's an update.
Yeah, it's just an update, and-
Okay, do I hear a motion to acknowledge?
We had some pending issues going on, and we just wanna make sure we took care of-
Move to acknowledge our confusion.
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Gonsal, to acknowledge everyone's confusion on this project. All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item asked, consideration, discussion of possible termination of Net Data Contract for fine and fee collections in Precinct JP 5-1 and 5-2, Bruce?
Yes, you know, some time ago, if you reviewed the backup material, April 2nd, I believe it was, in response to action at a Commissioners Court meeting, we sent a letter, or you, you signed a letter, Judge, to Net Data, asking for them, or actually demanding that they put together with, yeah, that they put together some information that Joe and the Odyssey people need, I speak of that, Joel Reyes, our IT manager, needed in order to smoothly transition the, to the Odyssey system that the court has clearly decided to, to do, and, and the implementation of which is underway. And since then, Joe, I don't know, on average of every couple of weeks, has, has followed up and said, hey, you know, when are we gonna get this stuff, and, and we don't get any response of any consequence from them. Now, there's, there, is my understanding, and Joe would have more of the technical details, and, and we have a, a, an executive session item discussing the legal aspects of this, but in, since this was put on the agenda, Joe and I have spoken about some alternative ways to go here that may not require, or may not make prudent termination of this contract, but perhaps Joe can explain to you all where we are in the conversion process, what we can do with and without this data in order to complete the conversion process, and then we can take up, if need be, any of the legal issues in executive session.
Thank you, Bruce, Judge Commissioners, one of the items that Bruce and I had discussed was, in the current timeline that we're at right now, without their data, there is another data pass coming at the beginning of July. Without that data, without the information from that data, it makes it very difficult for us to incorporate that part of the project. One of the options that Bruce and I discussed is that, pending termination of the contract, that could have some implications as far as fines and fees, as far as collections for the JP's offices, and we didn't wanna be putting the county in an unnecessary area. One thing we can do is we can move forward, with no conversion from their side, we can have them go live without no conversion, but that would put a lot of unnecessary stress on that, those two offices. The current timeline right now is to have the JP's go live-
Joe, before you continue, we have a current contract, right? Legal?
Yes.
Okay, are there any requirements of them in regards to providing us data and information that we need in that contract?
No, there isn't, as a matter of fact, that's what I just asked Delvia to go get, I had reviewed that a couple of weeks ago, to see what, if any, provision is made in that contract for that. And, you know, one of the alternatives may be to negotiate with them for the cost, if any, or additional consideration, if any, is needed in order to, you know, get this data from them.
Is that information theirs or ours?
It's our information, but their software systems is a proprietary system, and in order for us to obtain that data, it may require cooperation from their end with cooperation from our end, and additional time expense, arguably at least, that is not contemplated within the express wording of the contract. Now, there'd be a legal argument that because there's a termination clause, everyone here understands that this is a, you know, potentially a limited contract, and sooner or later, we're gonna need the data, and we could go argue all we want to in the court about it. Alternatively, avoiding all of that stuff, we could, we could talk about what it would cost, or what agreement might be struck with them to get their cooperation that, that most is impliedly suggested in the contract.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I wanted to get that legalities down.
Oh, I understand, Commissioner, your mark. One of the things we have right now, tentative, is a deadline for going live with the JP's, and that's January of 2013. So depending on what action we prove, it could, we just need to know what direction we're gonna go.
So is everybody on board now?
Yes, ma'am, JP 5-1 and 5-2 have been attending the sessions, there has been a turnout, and we are moving forward.
Talking to Joe Commissioners and Judge, he suggested that, as of a date certain, the business affairs of the JP Court could begin to be kept on Odyssey. That, and then, in the contract, there is a winding down, six-month winding down provision, in other words, where they would continue to work for six months under the contract, for, for the collections aspect of, of the subject matter. And so, it, it's like he's suggesting, and what I'm told is that they can go forward, assuming we wanna set a date certain within which we will no longer use Odyssey, subject to this six-month winding down provision.
Net data.
I'm sorry, what I say, Odyssey, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, lots of stuff going on today, net data. And so, it can be done without their cooperation is the point, and that, and, and we may not need to terminate the contract in order to go forward, at least at this point in time.
Can't you all negotiate that with them?
I've been trying to, sir, I've been sending emails with Mr. Humphrey repeatedly, I've carbon copied Bruce and David on all the emails, it just, I'm not getting a response back.
But then move on.
To defend that data's status here, it's not Net Data's decision, the ultimate decision is Net Data works for us, it's the court's decision, it's Judge Gano's decision and my decision. We've not denied any of the records. The item says that Net Data's contract for fines and fees collections, the contract for fines and fees collections is not with Net Data, it's with GHS. Net Data is just a company that's been given to us by GHS at no cost to the county, they're the program that we work with. GHS is the collection company that does our collection fines and fees, whom we have a contract with for collection fines and fees.
So there's another contract?
There was never a contract with Net Data, the con, Net Data just was given to us by the contract from GHS for us to have an adequate program in our office to process all our cases.
Well, we, we, we've been talking about Net Data for months here, we've been talking about the problems that the JP here has with converting from Net Data to others, the technical distinction about who it is here, if that is the excuse for totally ignoring every request from Joel Reyes, then it's unten-
Joel Reyes has never given me anything in writing for any, any request for me to do the first-
I'm not talking about you, Judge, I'm talking about Net Data, we sent the letter to Net Data, as I understand it, GHS is, you know, the contracting arm of Net Data who has the system that GHS uses to get this done now. If we wanna talk about technical distinctions, fine-
And we, we have no problems giving Joe any information to help with the conversion whatsoever.
Well, I think the problem, though, is that you don't have the codes and the fields, or whatever the technical language is, Joe, you can jump in here, that is necessary to convert old data into a usable form under the Odyssey system.
It's all in the same system, I believe, within the county.
I think what, what Net Data explained to us is that it's just the mapping- I think what Net Data explained to us is that it's just the mapping of where you want the files to go, is that correct? Not the data.
What we're trying to understand is, and maybe there's some confusion as to what exactly their request is.
Well, Bruce, just out of curiosity, the letter dated April 2nd.
Yes, sir.
Have we gotten a response?
No.
No response whatsoever?
No response. Nothing other than, we'll look into it, and that's what Joe's been told now for two months plus.
I can't answer to that because Net Data's not here, or GHS, whomever the letter was sent to. A copy of that letter was not sent to our offices. I can't speak for Judge Kano because Judge Kano's not here. I can tell you that whatever was sent to GHS or Net Data has not been rerouted or carbon copied to my office.
Well, in...
The letter was sent to your office?
Not, I've never received it.
To both you and Judge Kano? You're copying it?
That was the original, that was only the original letter.
Well, the original letter?
Yeah, but the follow-ups went directly to Net Data, or Humphries.
The follow-ups I've not ever received.
Well, the others are emails, you know?
The, the original letter, just clarify, was copied to both judges.
If the question is, the bottom line question is, the mere fact that we need to release information to Joe through Net Data or work within, we have no issues with that.
Well, then, I'm not sure I know why we're talking about this, because this was requested more than two months ago, and we've had zero cooperation from anyone in terms of getting the technical information, or fields, or descriptions of codes and whatnot that were requested in April 2nd.
Well, I think it's being bounced back and forth because Net Data says it has to come from the courts, they're saying it has to come from Net Data, maybe we need a legal clarification in that, and you can do that for us.
Sally, could you help Joe try to decide?
I've never denied any help, and they understand that.
Can you, can you help us get to whoever we need to talk to, Joe? I mean, evidently, Mr. Humphries is not the guy to talk to, because he doesn't respond to you, okay? So there's got to be somebody else. So you can help us out?
Right, and the possibility is that everything's being directed to Net Data, and it should be directed to GHS. I don't know.
Okay, but Julie, help us.
Yes, sir.
Chris, I have a question for you. While all of this is being looked into, can you start and move on on this by putting, you're obviously not going to use the same system that Net Data has.
Right.
Can you move forward to put on whoever is doing it, I guess it's what, Linebarger that's doing it right now? Who are we using for all the other?
Linebarger.
Well, we have two programs. We have Linebarger, and then we have Skoflaw, which is kind of a backup to Linebarger.
The program, ma'am, is actually Easy Justice through Hammer Enterprises, and of course, Net Data and GHS.
And you're able to work with Easy Justice?
Right.
So can we not start from here on out with, by implementing that?
Yes, we can. The question, as always, has been, what do we do with our old records, the historical records? And what we, what Joe, I believe, has been asking for from Net Data is the, what we call the data dictionaries, the field definitions. These are the 50 tables that we have.
Can you speak up into the microphone?
These are the 50 tables that we have, this is what those values represent, and then we have to figure out where they're supposed to go. That's not GHS or anybody else's concern. What we're asking them is, what do the fields look like? Now, short of that, and we have entered situations with hostile vendors before where they say we're not going to help, if we have the ability to at least extract the data, then the project team, our DBAs with Joe's assistance, can say, let's go make our best guess, with Sally saying, hey, guys, here's the screens, you can essentially reverse engineer where things go. It's ideal if you're, I'm sorry, Judge Sally, if you, if you're given the information from the vendor, then you know exactly where things are supposed to go. It reduces your costs, reduces your schedule, those types of things. But if we can at least get the data, then we can figure out how we're going to consume it.
And the, and the data, you can get it from the judge? Is that what you're saying?
There's a, there's a technical question that I can't answer. I don't know if Joe's staff has the ability to mass extract all that information. I don't know where it's stored, so I can't answer that. But if Tyler is able to receive the data, then without assistance from GHS or from Net Data, whichever organization we're talking about, we can proceed and do our best effort to get those historical records converted.
Help me understand this. Easy Justice serves all the other JP's?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. And you've been able to get, you've been able to get whatever you needed from them?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you start her office and Judge Kano's office using the same, whatever it is that you all are going to do, and then putting it into that system?
That's the problem.
No? Help me here, from here on out.
From here forward, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We can do from the day forward with no data. We can't do that. The historical is what we're really concerned about. Ongoing cases, fines that haven't quite been collected, or any warrants that haven't been served, that's what we need.
Well, Joe, I have a question for you, regarding historical. Do you understand that JP, we've been using Net Data, GHS for six years, approximately? Before that, we were the only court that was auditing Cameron County other JP's, and we were under the program of all this important information. I mean, the commissions will actually give you those, that program as well, because we used to, if you're going to go by that, it's in the years.
What we're looking at right now, Judge, is just the data that's contained within the DA's 400 from Net Data. That's what we're looking for right now. What we don't know is where it's at, what it's called, where it's referenced, how it's referenced, how many tables are involved. We don't know any of that. So we're going to have to guess.
It's all in the county's record, you should know that.
It's a bunch of files. We don't know which one is the ones we need. There's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of stuff in there. We don't know which ones we need. And that's what I was asking for.
It's kind of like, you know, they have the key to open that door for you, basically, and that's what you need.
I just need the arrows pointing me, take this one, this one, this one, this one, and we can do.
Oh, yeah, you come to the office and my staff will feature that correction, and they go, they go sadly, what's that?
Okay, so, Joe, it sounds like Judge Sally has the information you need. Commissioner, to answer your question, I think I anticipate where you were going with that. Everybody's going to go into Odyssey, obviously. We're going to build the system to look the same, we've had that discussion before. Really, it's easier to get kind of the roadmap from the vendor, but failing assistance for them, we as, now as a combined project team, can just say, let's go figure this out. And if that's what we need to do, then that's what we're going to do.
It'd cost us a little bit more.
And you realize, I mean, now, now, Judge, you have come before this court and said, you know, we're on board, but you stalled this for a long time. So it's cost us already, and now it's going to cost us more, but whatever the case is, let's move on, please. We need to get over that.
It's costing us in the delay of the implementation.
Let's move on. Where do we go from here, then? What do you want on this agenda item? Is there, I mean, we do not have a contract with Net Data, per se, so how can you terminate a contract that we don't have?
Let's make a motion to table this one and reword it properly.
You know, you know, I'll have to apologize if we technically named the wrong person. My understanding is, Net Data is the source of the information needed. That's been the focus. If we need to terminate this, what is it?
Well, we have, we have...
That's all fine and well. If we get the cooperation that we need from Graves, Humphries, Stahl, and/or Net Data, then we don't need to put, you know, Judge Gonzalez's staff to the task of furnishing information with a few keystrokes, as I understand it. We can acquire the fields and information and software data or...
Well, let's do this, let me ask for a tabling of this item. We're going to be discussing it anyway in executive session, and from there, we can determine what the wording can be for the next agenda item.
Yes.
Okay? So let me hear a motion to table item S.
I made a motion.
By Commissioner Adnan this, second by Commissioner Gots. Any discussion? All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam carries. Item T, discussion of possible action to call for the voluntary resignation of Armando Villalobos as the Cameron County, I mean, the Cameron County attorney sometimes referred to as the Cameron County DA. Commissioner?
Judge, I put this item on the agenda. It's, I think, a couple of weeks ago, we had some things come up to this commission that brought to light potential problems for us, and subsequently to that, there was an indictment issued, and I am operating totally on the presumption of innocence, or proven guilty. It has nothing to do with guilt on this issue, it just has to do with a potential conflict in the cloud of how our judicial system is delivering justice in Cameron County. You know, there's, there's some issues that have been brought to the attention of public, public has brought them to me. I feel compelled, as a commissioner that represents one-fourth of the population of this county, to make sure that what I hear from them and what I think must occur or should occur, occurs. And again, under the presumptions of innocence, absolutely nothing to do with guilt or otherwise. You know, we've had a presiding, an ex-presiding judge of the 5th District, of district judges in the state of Texas, say publicly that there could be a potential conflict in the continuance of our current DA staying and doing the work he's doing in that office. We've had a district attorney from our neighboring county that has concurred pretty much with what Judge Banuelos said in regards to, you know, he felt that the individual, because of the air of what's around him in these indictments, should step down, at least temporarily aside while those issues are taken care of. You know, since then, it's been brought to light by our auditor that they have not been able to audit Fund 90 for a number of years, you know? You know, that's a little disturbing to me, because we have no control except to approve items that come to this commission on that fund. Speaking of Fund 90, we had a contract that was signed and given to us and placed on our agenda a few meetings ago to hire Norden Coleman as a special prosecutor for the DA's office and pay them out of Fund 90. You know, I don't want to go on and on and on, because it's not for me to make judgment. I'm just putting facts out that I've seen come before us. You know, we have a convicted murderer that is loose somewhere in this world of ours that, you know, supposedly, from what, again, I read and understand, no objections were made for his release by the DA. What kind of issues that brings up, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, I don't presume to be one, but it is disturbing. And it's not only disturbing to me, it's disturbing to many people in our community, you know? And all I would ask is that, you know, Armando's a friend, I've known him for many years, but I think that we need to, to decloud our judicial system, bring back, you know, I mean, there's, there's a gentleman out there, he could, anyone, you know, anyone could take over temporarily just to make sure that the operations and things that are ongoing in that office, which is the highest law enforcement official in the county, as far as I'm concerned, that I hold in the highest esteem, you know, should be run without a cloud of any issues being there. You know, again, it's presumption of innocence. I am not saying anything about guilt. I'm just saying that a cloud exists in which residents of our county, many of them have come to me, have expressed a concern about how justice is being administered, and we owe that, at the very least, to them, you know? There are professional codes of conduct, there's judicial codes of conduct, we have a county code of conduct that we should follow, and, and all of us should follow that, you know? So I'm not saying I move to have him resign, I'm saying, you know, I would like for us to consider asking him to just step down or step aside as he goes through the process, allow himself all the time necessary to defend the issues that he rightfully, legally needs to defend for himself, and, and allow us to move on with justice in the county.
Any comments?
Yes, Judge, I'd like to make a comment. I believe that we are not here to pass judgment on anyone, and if Mr. Villalobos is under indictment, he has yet to be declared guilty. And until he's given that process, I believe that we are not the ones that should ask him to step down. If, it's up to him to declare his innocence, and, and if he decides to step down, you know, he answers to the, to the residents of this county. So I disagree, I do not believe that we, this court, should go into that, or delve into that matter. I believe we have a legal system, and due process has to be followed. That's all I have to say.
Yes. Let me get very clear. There's no doubt that we're all concerned about what's happened in our county, not just this time, but times before. And when this happens, it puts a cloud on all of us, every one of us. Excuse me, I have a bad cough. I guess my biggest concern is that Judge Banuelos came in and, with all his experience and all of his knowledge with the legal profession, determined that, at this point, nothing can be done. The Constitution's very clear about executive branch and judicial branch, and we're the executive and judicials over there, and they do that, and we're not supposed to be telling them what to do, just like they don't tell us what to do. I think there's a, we have a, I do not know what the legal ramifications are for us as a court to take any kind of action, and I would very much like to talk to our legal counsel privately about this, because I do not want to overstep our bounds as a commissioner of court. I'm not here to pass judgment or to say guilt or innocence to anybody. That's what the courts are for, and that's what I think the court should do. Thank you, Judge.
There's no dispute that, what we've all seen the last several months regarding the judiciary and the DA, I don't think I was wrong in saying that the court does not have a legal basis to stand on at this point. And until I'm told otherwise by legal and other lawyers that I've spoken with, we can do this all day long, and, you know, I called for his voluntary stepping down a month ago along with other folks, other, other officials throughout South Texas that have done that. But we also understand that he is innocent until proven guilty, and indictment is simply that. I support asking him to voluntary, to voluntarily step down, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that it has no teeth to it. It's, we could all stand out there in front of the courthouse with banners and ask him to resign, and it's not going to, I don't think it's going to have an impact. What I said early on was that I believed he should resign in order to focus on his defense, focus on his family, and focus on, on his future. Mr. Villalobos has chosen to, to do neither at this point by resigning. He believes he can run the office effectively and efficiently with the cloud of an indictment over him. I disagree. I think that the office is in somewhat disarray. I think by virtue that he's attending the hearings over the previous trial that happened with Marchand indicates that he's, he's not at the office where he should be, but as, as the Commissioner Benarida said, this is up to the constituency to, to focus on. I will support this, if, if there's a motion, I will second it, for the reason that it's simply a, an asking of a voluntary resignation from him, knowing that it has little to, to no teeth in it. It's just simply a, an asking. So I, I stand by my, my comment of a month ago that there's nothing legal that we can follow at this point to make him resign. I think I was right in that comment. But, you know, everyone's entitled to their opinion. I think most people in the court of public opinion would prefer that he do step down, but that's his call, and I respect it. But at the end of the day... But, at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's his decision, and he's doing what he believes is right for him. So, having said that...
One question of legal, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Okay, legal, legal. Are there any legal ramifications for us as a court to ask for his voluntary resignation under the presumption of innocence, just to be able to have justice delivered without a cloud of indictments over him?
I just, I think that as a symbolic gesture of this executive body, you know, the Constitution charges with executive administrative duties for business affairs and whatnot in the county, I don't see any legal ramifications for, you know, a call for a voluntary resignation. To answer your question, no, I don't see any.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I have one, one correction I'd like to make. Commissioner, you stated that we had not been able to audit Fund 900.
Your comments were...
We, we were able, we do conduct an annual audit. We audit it every year, and we audit throughout the months. What we were not able to do was to do a cash count of the office. Okay? So, just to clarify that.
Note that clarification for the record.
So, no cash counts of the audits?
Correct.
Okay, very good. All right. I have an action item on. Do I hear a motion?
Judge, under the presumption of innocence of Mr. Villalobos, I, I would, under the circumstances of an indictment, you know, clouding the judicial process in Cameron County, I would ask that we ask him for a voluntary resignation, or step aside from office while this is ongoing, while he's doing his defense in this case.
Okay, that's a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Garza. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No comments?
All in favor, signify by saying aye. All, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, dies for two-two. All right. Item U, in connection with possible Cameron County Commissioners Court's Code of Conduct violations, consideration and discussion of possible Commissioners Court authorization to obtain trial court's record in the Ray Marchand federal trial pertaining to alleged misconduct of certain state district judges. Commissioner?
Judge, I put this on also because, in the course of what has transpired over the last couple of weeks at the federal courthouse, you know, there's bits and pieces that have been put out, not substantiated by anyone except media, as far as I know, you know. And the only way, I believe, that we can get information that was duly sworn to and admitted as evidence in the court proceedings is to have the trial records, or the trial court records of that case. And the only way to get those, those records is for this court to request them, and that, that request is being made in lieu of, you know, after going through, in 2006, this Commissioners Court passed the County Commissioners Court Code of Conduct. Of the group that was here on the 31st of January of 2006, I'm the only commissioner that was here when we signed this document. This document is part of HR, and, and I apologize to Mr. Penya for having said it was on the web, the homepage, it was on the human resource homepage, posted on there, and, and it's been part of our policies. This policy didn't just come up because we were good dreamers and idealist thinkers, it came up because, previous to that date, we had had a constable that had started serving time, and we had had some indictments in regards to a previous sheriff that we have that is now in, serving time in, in the federal legal system. After listening to some of the tidbits in the newspaper and the news media of some of the allegations being made by people that were under oath and testifying, you know, if we read through the Code of Conduct, you know, we have a responsibility, as a Commissioners Court, to the public of this county to uphold minimum standards of conduct. And standards of conduct are not just for county commissioners, they are for every elected official, and that is included in the Code of Conduct that was approved then, for every elected official in this county, for every appointed official in this county, and for every employee of this county. And it tells us how we're supposed to do business for the county, how we're not supposed to do business for the county, what constitutes wrongdoing, what constitutes conflicts of interest, what type of disclosures we need to have, what nepotism is, any exceptions in the process, and the definitions of all of the words that we used in this document, the applicability of the document, and, and in trying to put the tidbits of what was put out by media, it's, it's frightening to think that there are a whole lot of things that might have been violated. And there were names mentioned, and it was not hearsay, it was under oath, and it was testimony. And the only way that I can ask legal to look and see if there is any violations legally is to have a transcript of that proceeding. And the item is placed on your agenda today to see if that is something that this court would be willing to do, is proceed to buy those proceedings, those documents, those court reporter reports, whatever it is, you know, so that they can look at it and see if there's any violations of policy. If they violated their judicial Code of Conduct, that's for somebody else's doing to look at. That's not ours. We don't have any authority over that. If they violated the professional conduct of attorneys, that's a state bar issue. We don't have anything to do with that. But if they violated our Code of Conduct as county officials, it is our responsibility to enforce it, or it's our responsibility to throw it in the trash, one of the two.
Commissioners?
Yes. Commissioner Garza, I agree with you, but, to a certain extent. But you have a disgraced convicted ex-district judge that is alleging all sorts of things. And so, to me, the investigation is ongoing, so I believe that we need to let the investigation go on. I mean, he, he's been convicted, he lied before, and what's to say that he's not lying about these different district judges? And for us to spend money to go and get these proceedings or records, I mean, I, I can't see us doing that. But then again, you know, I will look to legal counsel. Before we do this, can we get an Attorney General's opinion as to whether we can do this?
Well, we could, we could ask the Attorney General, the auditor probably would be the person in terms of the expenditure of public funds. We could get an AG's opinion. Well, I think that, of course, that would take some time.
I have never thought a lot about the American Civil Liberties Union, but I, I think I'm a member without even knowing it. And the reason I say that is just because somebody's been deposed and sworn and given oath in court doesn't mean it's the truth. I could sit here right now and say, "I gave David Garcia $500 to buy me some lumber for a project I had at my house," and make a big stink and make a report and all that stuff, how could David prove it's not true? If I gave you cash, could you prove it wasn't true? You really couldn't. A lot of things are said to defend themselves, to cover up, or to maybe say, "Take somebody down with you." We have a bad habit of doing that in Cameron County. So, I do not know at this point what is true and what is not true. And that's for the court to decide. To, to accuse for anybody, whether they've been indicted or not, to accuse somebody of a wrongdoing, to me, always takes some type of evidence to prove it. If you can't prove it, then it needs to be dropped. People believe, people always believe the negative. "No, I think that's a bad person, that's a bad person." You never hear people talk good about other people. It's always bad. It's always a bad sight. Nobody says anything good about one of these judges, or how good they've done as a judge, and they were really good, and "I wish I could have been like them and not gotten indicted." That wasn't said. "No, let's bring them down with me, you know, I, I know he did this, this one was a gift, this one was a bribe." I mean, how do you determine what's true and what's not true? That's for the jury to decide, not the Cameron County Court. And that's where I stand. Thank you.
Well, I, you know, I, I just want to make sure that, that you understand where I'm coming from. It's under the presumption of innocence in all of these cases. But it's, it's also under the presumption of, we spend, every one of our cities in our county spends an ungodly amount of money trying to lure people to come do business in this county. The latest endeavor is SpaceX. Do you think that a company is gonna come in, there's three people that they're looking at, three different sites, do you think that these guys, at the end of the day, when they make a decision where they're going, and they see the judicial system that they read about, whether it's true or not, I don't know. I do know that there's been some convictions, I know that there've been some sentencing, you know. I do know that there's a cloud over how we deliver justice in this county, because I've been told by some of these folks. Do you think that SpaceX is gonna say, "I'm gonna," Elon Musk, you know, and you got the opportunity to meet him, "I'm gonna go invest how many millions of dollars in Cameron County, where I don't know if the day I show up to court, I'm gonna have a fair shot on that Workman's Comp case, or on that injury case, or on that, whatever case we might have." You know, do you think if there's any, any presumption, that they're not gonna get a fair chance at justice, they're gonna pick Cameron County to come invest their money in? I don't think so. I think they're gonna look at all these pictures, and they're gonna say, "There's issues out there." And that, that's just one example of many. You know, the folks in the EDCs in our cities in this county are having to fight that particular image that has been created in this county, and still trying to lure people in. And they have been successful. But think of how much more successful they were, or could be, if all these folks that are coming in, employing people, would know that they could have a fair shot at justice in a situation that would come up where there are millions of dollars invested in what we're doing, and trying to provide jobs for our people could benefit from.
Commissioner, I, I think you're 100% correct. The only point I would make is I would not think that we are the only county in the world, or state, of the United States, that has these problems. I'm sure Florida has these problems, Puerto Rico, I'm sure, has these problems, and, and all things being considered, we still have the best location, climate, people, to provide the best we can for SpaceX, and we can't put everybody in the same basket.
Well, I just use that as one example of many.
No, but you're, but, you know, there's no doubt that you're correct, but, again, I don't want to paint everybody with the same brush, like that, to, we're all bad, or we, you know, Cameron County should, doesn't deserve this, because I think we do. And a few rotten apples...
I think we deserve it.
A few rotten apples, a few rotten apples doesn't kind of tilt the cart yet. Now, if there was a bunch of rotten apples, I'd say we have a real big problem, but we don't have a real big problem yet, but not final. We'll have to wait to see how it goes. And I'm hoping and praying that it does not affect our situation with SpaceX. I think we've done very well, I think we're basically the top contender at this point, and we hope and pray for the best on that particular issue.
I don't know how many apples are in that crate, but there's more than one. I don't have an issue with requesting the, the trial records, but also keep in mind that, I mean, I was reading the story online, because I was out of town most of the time, and, and so I don't, as, as good a job as, as the news media may do to, to, to report, and Emma did a great job, there's some things that are posted that are not posted. And I remember just reading something that Mr. Lemos had said, and, and I think we're taking it to, to almost like, yeah, God, what he said must have been true. Even though in, in our minds, we may think it's true, because we've always thought, I've always thought, there's always some issues on, in the other building, but what he said was, he had heard, and about wrong and unethical things going on, and he named a few of the judges. That's all he said in that context, based on what I read. There was no corroborating evidence or information other than his testimony. So, he could have said that about any one of us, and we don't have the opportunity to, to defend, none of the people that he mentioned have had the opportunity to defend themselves. They've been relatively quiet about it. So, as far as requesting the transcripts, I, I have no issue with that. I, I don't think it's, it's an enormous amount of money. What I do have a concern, though, is that where do we go from there? We get the transcripts, someone's gonna read them or listen to them, and I imagine it'll be our, our civil counsel, and then he, if we ask him to, will unilaterally make a decision, like, you know, yes, there's something there, and no, there's something not there. And even if there is something there, and there was a, a potential Code of Ethics violation by an elected official, we hear it all the time, a, a, an ethical code violation is not a, a ground for removing an elected official. That can only happen under certain circumstances, and a violation of a Code of Ethics that was adopted back several years ago, I don't think rises to that. But I'm willing to, to request it and have maybe a committee of, of a few people listen to it, so it doesn't come from one individual, and then make a recommendation to Commissioners Court as to where we go with it. And I would think that we would turn it over to the, you know, to the Judicial Commission or Attorney General or somebody. But we, as a court, and I think we need to understand, the public understands, that we, as a court, do not have the authority to remove an elected official unless that elected official has done something that I don't think this falls under yet, that can be proven, or has been convicted of, of a felony. And that's where I, that's where I believe we are. I mean, this sounds really good, I mean, yeah, we can do it, and we're, we're doing our thing, and, but really, our, our authority is somewhat limited. But I'm willing to, to go ahead and, and expand the, the funds. I don't know if you have any idea how much it would be, Bruce, but I can imagine it's not gonna be a whole lot of money. Do you know?
I, in, in following up on the Commissioner's request, I talked to the court reporter, Tacey, and her best guess, without taking the time to go through this whole record and spot-check for names of judges, was somewhere around 100 pages, in order to get the context within which whatever statements were made, were made. And, and so, and they're $3.65 a page. Now, she tells me that it would be a couple of months before she could actually do that, and so, you know, there would be a significant delay in going forward, assuming we went ahead and ordered selected items, you know, having to do with whatever was said about these district judges. You know, the other, the other part of this, when you start talking about the record and simply reviewing what's there, there, there have been, to my understanding, I did not attend the trial, haven't followed it in any great extent, but I understand that there were some phone recordings, you know, phone wiretap recordings, that, to the extent that they were entered into the evidence, under the rules of federal procedure, they were reduced to a written form and then offered as an exhibit in the, in the trial. And that might be acquired without a great deal of expense. You know, there, there, you know, what, what you, whatever you want to do, I think, limited as it is with this particular agenda item, phrased as it is, I think all it really does is would authorize, you know, a look at what is there, actually there. But going forward, I, I can tell you that I, I would respectfully suggest that if there is anything, as a matter of fact, when it comes to me reviewing it, I'm not particularly fond of that idea. I would much prefer to see whatever is, is mined from the record over there, turned over to the authorities who are in the business of reviewing judicial action and conduct, where there is the Judicial Commission. Juan and I have talked about this, there's four different possible routes of taking disciplinary or removal action against a sitting district, state district judge, none of which include the Commissioners Court in terms of power. Okay, now...
It doesn't include it in terms of power, Bruce.
Yeah.
But it includes it in our responsibility to be in, or conducting ourselves with this Code of Conduct. If you notice, under the penalties section of the Code of Conduct that was approved, and for the record, this Code of Conduct was not approved at one meeting. It took us about a year of going back and forth, you probably remember this, be, back and forth, we'd put it on, we'd look at it, we'd find something else, add on, and, you know, go back and forth. But if you look at the second paragraph of, of the penalties section, you know, it tells you there that "Inflections of this Code that represent, represent criminal violations shall be referred to the District Attorney's Office and/or any other..." to the district attorney's office and/or any other authorities as warranted." Any other authorities as warranted could be anyone associated with the individuals in question.
Well, I don't think there's any doubt that the Code of Conduct says what you say it says, Commissioner.
And it also says, you know, in the beginning of the code, you know, if you look at the policy, you know, and you read in the policy of what it is that is expected of us is that, you know, we are not to harm the interest of the county or the public, we are to lessen the, if we do these things, you know, the policy is, you know, "No county official or employee shall engage in activities that may directly or indirectly, or have the potential to harm the interest of the county or the public, or lessen the confidence of the public and external parties in the county by creating impropriety or appearance thereof, demonstrate bias, discrimination, or create the appearance of unfairness on part of the county, violate any ordinance, law, or statute recognized by the state of Texas, conceal any wrongdoing, including crimes or violation of county policies from the public and authorities." You know, that encompasses quite a bit.
All right.
I want to make one quick comment.
Okay.
I don't agree with your issue on the penalty phase and paragraph two. If you read it very carefully, it talks about public reprimand, public warning, remedial training, counseling, suspension, with or without pay. We don't pay the salaries of district judges, so that's out. Demotion, we can't do that with elected official. Reduction in rank or pay, which is questionable, or termination, removal from office. Additionally, infractions of the code that represent criminal violations shall be referred to the district attorney or the judicial system. So once administrative and once, it's kind of conflicting what it says.
Well, it's not conflicting. It's only encompassing, aren't it?
Again, it's all interpretation.
It's all, it says, "In the case of appointed officials and employees," okay? And also includes appointed and elected officials in the code. It includes everyone that has anything to do in how they represent Cameron County.
I don't think by passage of this Code of Conduct, it gives us the right to suspend or remove or terminate any elected official.
I didn't say it gave us a right. I says, you know, I said, and I didn't read all of it for the sake of time.
No, I did, I just read it right now.
Yeah, but it, you know, I mean, if you want to read all of it, you can read all of it. You know, we can issue a reprimand, public or private, we can have training, we can have counseling, you know, there's other avenues associated with it, but if there's any criminal violations, we have a duty to refer those to the district attorney's office.
That's correct.
And also, other authorities as may be warranted, whether it be law enforcement, whether it be the Ethics Commission, whether it be the state bar, whether it be, whatever organization is responsible.
I agree 100%, the only thing you didn't say is not this body. We can only refer.
That's all.
We can't, we can't...
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying we're gonna fire, terminate, or whatever, I'm just saying, you know, is it a responsibility for us, after spending a year putting together a Code of Conduct and then just allowing it to, you know, not be used because...
Well, I'm sure we've had numerous Code of Conduct issues throughout the years and no one ever brought it to the forefront, so glad that you did. However, and I think the Code of Conduct, what I read briefly, and that's all great for appointed officials and employees, but it's just tough to sanction an elected official. I just don't think you can do that, and I think maybe we need to review that Code of Conduct and tighten the wording on. But really, at the end of the day, look, we can do this, we can request, we can have somebody listen to it, we can remit it to the Judicial Commission, and it's out of our hands. I agree, we have a duty to at least do that. I'm sure they're probably already aware of it, but we can go ahead and do that. But in terms of reprimanding and calling down an elected official, we can do that all day long, and it's not gonna do any good. But, okay, so then where do you want to go from here? You want to make a motion to authorize legal to request or obtain the trial court's records as it pertains to the Ray Marchand trial?
So...
Moved by Commissioner Garza. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, nay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Adnada, second by, no, we're not gonna tie on this one, are we, again, are we, Bernie?
No.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Adnada, second by Commissioner Garza, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries? We, do this.
Judge, what...
Yes, ma'am.
I was, I mean, this party had an issue regarding that word, costing the county some money.
No, the delay.
I'd like to hear for the totals of what we have saved from the instruction of...
Okay.
I already have, Judge, I was talking about the delay in bringing you all on board. That's what I was talking about.
Thank you.
No money questions, the amount of money that you bring in.
Thank you. Okay. To discuss the following items. Item A, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel one pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item B, same Code Section. Item C, same Code Section. Item D, same Code Section. Item E, pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Item F, pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and 2. Item G, pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and 2. Item H, pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and 2. Item I, pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and 2.